You need to get to go.
No. Just passing the. Canada.
C'est moi qui est gars. C'est grave à dessus, j'ai acheté des mots, non, même gros sort de.
It's not a suit.
Il est séduisant que le nom que.
It's Timmy's comment, c'est normal.
Ben, là, je.
I see that I have a guess.
Ça fait souvent, je vois là, puis je connais le chemin.
Ça, le, c'est, c'est une question.
Oui, hein.
That's still a dream, okay, it's a sad, sad, sad.
Ça, c'est west in the north, mais woods and all in the north, probably troglodyte. Puis c'est out there.
Regarde, il y a Corbeil, c'est pas ça, là.
Non, non.
A gagnant, le pète, un gagnant, les stoos.
Ouais, c'est ça, là, moi, j'ai mis, ouais. Tout le tout.
De votre.
Non, 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 je suis dans, tu sais quand tu vas.
Parcier, puis.
Tu sais, je sais que.
Ah oui, ouais.
Troglodyte, j'avais.
Oui, oui.
Okay, mais je pense, oui, je pense que t'as côté de troglodyte.
Okay, mais tu prends un chemin qui monte au Québec, là. Okay.
So stay.
Rotherland.
Rotherland.
Like, so Rotherland, but you're always on a given. You're saying.
Non, pas mal.
Joko. You said that Joko.
Non, c'est, il est magazine.
Pourquoi, ben, là, ben, non, mais.
You say this.
Salut.
Are you a siacre?
Non, non. Mais.
I saw.
They get it. C'est une. C'est mon ravi.
All right.
Chalouy.
Who's that?
Caribou.
If I say, so I think for commencement, the, 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 Caribou. And semin.
It will be for. Thank you. Thank you.
No cut on.
Thank you, thank you.
What she's found. I'll ask our clerk. Is it six thirty right now?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Also, good evening, the evening at the New York Council, welcome to our council meeting. We'll start with the land acknowledgement. The municipality of West Nippising respectfully acknowledges that we are gathered on the homelands of the Anishnapi peoples, on the traditional territory of the Nipsing Tamogony and Doke's First Nations. Covered by the Rabesang Burong treaty, we honor and recognize their historic connection to the land and value their significant contributions in shaping and strengthening our community. And we spent it in the extreme west, to link this country to some of the. Le territoire désigné dans le traité Rabesang Burong, territoire traditionnel du peuple Anishnapi, et particulièrement des Premières Nations Nipsing Tamogony et Doke's. Nous honorons leur bien historique avec cet endroit et nous apprécions leur contribution significative à nos communautés. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Au fin déclaration d'intérêt pecuniaire?
I'm not. I have, I have a conflict on your, on your notice of motion eight point one and have filed proper documentation with our clerk.
Thank you. Conseiller Ebi has identified a declaration of pecuniary interest for eight point one. Hearing no further. Is there a mover and a seconder for the addendum? Approving the addendum, conseiller Leo, conseiller Chris.
This move by councillor Mallett and seconded by councillor Fisher, be it resolved that the addendum for the meeting of council held on October the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two be approved as presented.
Any objections or can objection? None carried. A mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda. Conseiller Val, conseiller Notme.
Is moved by councillor Zuhaiman, seconded by councillor Obége. Be it resolved that the agenda for the meeting of council held on October the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two be approved as presented.
Any objections or can objection? None carried. We move on to planning, then if yes, yes. Is there a mover and a seconder to adopt the bylaw twenty twenty-two ninety-seven to rezone certain lands on Sandy Island? Conseiller Notme, conseiller Val.
Is moved by councillor Rebels and seconded by councillor Juain. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-two ninety-seven being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw twenty fourteen forty-five to rezone certain lands located on Sandy Island from open space to rural and from open space to shoreline residential shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Any comments or questions? Any objections or can objection? None carried, adopté. On fait cet, au compte, et correspondance, correspondence and accounts. A mover and a seconder to adopt the council minutes of October fourth, two thousand twenty-two, conseiller Chris, conseiller Val.
It is moved by councillor Fisher and seconded by councillor Zuhaim. Be it resolved that the minutes of the council meeting held on October the fourth, two thousand twenty-two be adopted as presented.
Are there questions, comments? Any objections or can objection? None carried, adopté. A mover and a seconder to adopt the West Nippising Planning Advisory Committee meeting, minutes of September twelve. Conseiller Chris, conseiller Notme.
It is moved by councillor Fisher and seconded by councillor Rebels. Be it resolved that the minutes of the West Nippising Planning Advisory Committee meeting held on the twelfth of September, two thousand twenty-two be adopted as presented.
Questions, comments? Any objections or can objection? None carried, adopté. Mover and a seconder to adopt the various boarding committee minutes. Conseiller Chris. Conseiller Val.
It is moved by councillor Fisher and seconded by councillor Zuhaim. Be it resolved that the minutes of the following boards and committees be received. West Nippising Committee of Adjustment, September twelfth. Oshato Board of Management, June fifteenth and July twentieth. West Nippising Police Service Board, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Any questions or comments? Any objections or can objection? None carried, adopté. We have correspondence pertaining to the two thousand twenty-three OPP annual billing statement. Is there a resolution to receive the information?
Uh, no, madam mayor, it's just under correspondence.
Okay, no problem. Um, I'm not sure if our CEO or director of corporate services um, is with us and can possibly walk us through pertaining to the two thousand twenty-three OPP annual billing statement.
Do I have the floor, madam mayor?
Hold on, sorry.
Do I have the floor, madam mayor?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, um, so, yeah, so two thousand twenty-three is, is the year that we moved to the call for service or the billing model. We've been on, on the FTE model since transition in June of two thousand nineteen. Um, and that's because they needed three full years uh, of, of data before we were, uh, were sort of permitted to go to the, the billing model. So they've given us some, kind of, you know, an estimate of, uh, where, you know, um, we'll be in, in two thousand twenty-three, and this is what our, our monthly invoicing is, is based on. Um, it's actually, so it, it's actually a little bit better than, um, where some of our, our projections were and our, our continued projections were. Um, and that has a lot to do with, you know, we did this first projection back in two thousand seventeen and actually the cost per property for, um, the OPP has not escalated actually as fast as, as some of the assumptions we made. So we're actually a little bit better off than we thought we would even be when we, when we sort of started this process. So that's good news all around. And then it goes on and there are sort of documentation that gives you sort of the breakdown and how, how they come to these numbers. And this documentation is, is sort of, you know, um, what they provide annually. It's available on their website as well. Um, how they come up with, you know, what the total provincial cost broken fee is, then how the calls for service break back down to what our portion of that total cost is. Um, and then they do give us actually a summary of the, the, sort of, the last couple of years. Obviously, two thousand twenty-two is not done yet as far as the, the types of calls. And so that's how they go as far as working on a weighted average. And so the calls for service, um, the type of calls means that it gets weighted differently as far as how it responds to the total calls that the OPP respond to in the province and what our portion of that is therefore. Um, our portion of the provincial part is, is about what we thought it was several years ago, five years ago. And so that, that's kind of good news is that, you know, they've, they've been in, they've got several years' data and that, um, that our, our, you know, calls for service and our estimate of the portion of the, the provincial part is fairly consistent with what we, we thought we were going to be. There's no big surprises there. Um, and that felt really, there really is, there, there's no big surprises and that we're rolling into that, the new model. And, um, we'll, uh, we'll keep going on.
Any questions or comments? Conseiller Leo, conseiller Chris.
Notice of motion.
The word checks that were issued River Valley Waste Management care of Rowley that it be. That's what we also saw on our disbursements.
I'm just clarifying that your resolution.
That is not what the notice of motion states. The notice of motion states seeking council's authorization to view invoices paid by municipality to contractor Roland Larrabee for work done at the River Valley landfill.
Yeah, that's your motion, ma'am.
Okay, but there are invoices that were paid directly to Rowley that it be with specific sums for work that was performed at the River Valley Waste Management. And that's according to an email that you had provided to Conseil Janine.
Yes, but you might want to add and be accurate on an agenda if that's what you want, because that's not what is on this agenda. There's no big issue if council wanted to vote on that, but your notice of motion should have actually been more clear if that was your intent.
Invoices have to be signed by somebody.
So again, the the motion is to authorize the mayor, just grab it voice again. To authorize the mayor Joanne Savage to view invoices paid by the municipality to contractor Roland Larrabee for work done at the River Valley landfill. Counsel Duhaim.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
No.
Counsel Malet.
No.
Counsel Reberge.
No.
Counsel Ravida.
Nope.
Counsel Denis Senegal.
Yes.
Counsel Lee Senegal. Counsel Lee Senegal.
Said yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay.
Mayor Savage.
Yes.
It is tied and therefore defeated.
We move on to new business.
It's out of time.
I think Conseil Ali's was just clarifying a comment because it was five nay and four yes, therefore defeated.
Counsel Larrabee did not vote.
I'll show you the hell.
Okay, we move on to authorization to proceed with memorial plaque. Is there a mover and a seconder for the resolution Conseil Ali's Conseil Val?
It is moved by Counsel Lee Senegal and seconded by Counsel Duhaim, whereas a petition was received from the Perron family discussed at October 4th, 2022 council meeting. Be it therefore resolved that council authorizes the installation of a memorial plaque honoring the memory of Leo Perron at the Livingston Boat Launch.
Are there any questions or comments? Any objections of Conseil Chris?
So just just so it doesn't get lost, I think last time we were fairly unanimous about also putting life jacket signs at some of those boat launches. And I think we we all agreed on that. So I don't want it to get lost. I'm fine with approving this now as long as perhaps in budget or the next council can take that up. Thank you.
If the point of clarification, that's good you bring it up, but that was also reflected in the minutes that for the discussion, so it is recorded. So here would be the resolution to endorse the plaque. Are we okay with the resolution as is? Well, I see majority saying yes. Okay, so there's no objections carried at the. Mover and a seconder for the bylaw 202295 to amend. Conseil Chris Conseil Val.
It is moved by Counsel Fisher and seconded by Counsel Duhaim. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202295 amending bylaw number 202272 to adopt a community improvement plan for the West Nipissing municipality shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, the there's proposed changes as far as expanding the area for which eligible businesses can qualify. I wonder if our Director of Economic Development and Community Services, if he's with us this evening. Through you, would you be able to identify the amendments to the area that is being extended for the community improvement program?
Yes, I believe it was explained in your packages, but I'll gladly explain it to council. It's essentially extending on Highway 17 to the Markstay Warren municipal boundary. We have a local business there that is located and it was stopped short. I forget the name of the road before the boundary at Markstay Warren. That's where the CIP zone stopped. But then this one company, which we weren't aware of, reached out and they're interested in applying for this program. And they're rightfully within the municipality and located on Highway 17. So this is the requested change to go all the way to the boundary of Markstay Warren off Highway 17.
Are there further questions Conseil Ali's?
No, I just want to say that, yes, I, you know, it's it's nice that you explain it because there are people out there that they won't see, they won't see the paper, but don't download or they don't have printer. And so I've been having complaint about that, that it's okay to like when we're zoomed that. Because a lot of people, even if they have access to internet, sometimes they don't have printer. And it's hard to follow because we have, we have problem following sometime there so many paper papers. So thank you, Monsieur Stephan, for explaining. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Just out of curiosity, when it comes to the community improvement program, council prescribed seats area of businesses eligible to qualify for the program. There has been issues that also have been brought up pertaining to lodge operators, tourist lodge operators and why they are excluded from the community improvement program. That's because they're not in the designated area for the program. Would that be correct?
Any business not within the designated area would not be eligible. That's correct.
Okay. So there's an opportunity if next year if the program is reinstated, even increase the budget and B also increase the coverage area. That would be something that future councils can deal with.
Okay, but.
Say Chris.
So you raise an interesting point. And I would imagine we take this on a case by case basis, but some of the lodge owners actually do have signage on the on the on the major arteries. So if that were the case, if somebody wanted to update that, they did phone the Director of Corporate of Economic Development, then they would certainly be given consideration. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, it's on a case by case basis, not really having a very specific example to discuss, Counsel Fisher, but I would assume if they are located on an artery where we are looking at under the bylaw, they would certainly be eligible. It has to be on their property as well. The signage has to be on their property, not just highway signage, not a billboard. We wouldn't, we wouldn't touch those. It's it's signage on property and it's helping them or the businesses improve the facade of their buildings on their property.
Thank you.
Okay, Monsieur Prince, then I'm going back to the first comment that we're proposing tonight. It's to extend it for that people that own a business on close to Warren and is part of West Nipissing. But I don't, I don't understand anybody that's paying tax, lodges paying tax in West Nipissing. They shouldn't, they should, everybody should have, be allowed to to apply for that. Why is it one by one?
So I, the CIP had zone designation. Generally, in past years, when we had the CIP, it was strictly for downtown. We expanded that and it's to help businesses improve their look, their facade, their 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 signage, so that it's more appealing when people are driving through our community. Now, if we make every business eligible, you could have a home based hairdressing shop that no one would ever see that's outside a business section per se. So we had to limit boundaries. And and the program is there to improve the look of our businesses, to help them with, like I said, improve their signage and their their facade of their buildings, so that it's more appealing to to our residents and to people driving through our community. So it has to be in in highly visible areas. That's the goal of that type of project.
I I still don't don't get it, but I mean.
Well, I think our Director of Economic Development and Community Services sort of explained it very well. In the past, when the program was introduced, it was, the focus was on the downtown. And this time, when the Economic Development Authority Committee discussed the issue, we wanted to make sure that it was not only the downtown in Sturgeon Falls, but that all businesses in every downtown.
Okay.
Community would be part of it. But here, there's still frontage of businesses facing highway corridors that also have been added. But saying that, there's still some businesses that are excluded because of their actual location. But keep in mind that the budget that this council approved, if I'm correct, Stephan, when we look at facade improvement, we can up to three businesses up to a maximum of $15,000. The remaining would be for business signage, which could help up to five businesses for a maximum contribution of 5,000. Would that be correct?
It's, yeah, 60,000 total, 45 are designated for facade improvements. So if we get three applications that request the maximum contribution of 15,000, then we'd limit it at three applications. Let's say we get four applications and they're all asking only for $10,000. We would entertain four applications. Same goes for the signage. We have a maximum of 15,000, but a maximum of 5,000 per application, per request. If we get three applications, but they don't max out the 5,000, that means we could look at additional applications because we have money still left over within the allocated 60,000.
Thank you for the clarification. Conseil Rowley, Conseil Denis.
Thank you, ma'am. I was offline, so I apologize if I'm going to ask something that that was already answered. I just, but on on this topic, my question would be to to use the fan is I've I've noticed those map where they stop and they stop at the bridge here in River Valley. And just on the other side of the bridge, not too far, there's one not within a mile and one couple miles away, there are some very high priced, high quality quarries. Like they're, and and would they would they qualify for for this for this program? Or does it stop on on the location of the map that you've 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 showed us?
Well, generally, the information the bylaw council passed is is exactly as the maps are drawn. Like we are doing this evening, if we want to extend a certain boundary, it would have to come back to council because it's amending a bylaw. So as it stands, what what council approved, it was what is is what was presented. So if if right now, if there's the map that shows in River Valley that stops short of a quarry, then yeah, they wouldn't be eligible. We'd have to have a request and come back to council to ask for an amendment to the bylaw.
Revival, please.
It's not a rebuttal subsequent to the question that you asked Conseil Rowley, yes?
Yes, I'd like, okay, yes, thank you. Yes, it would be at at the time, I guess, that council did pass this these boundaries. I guess these quarries, some of them did not exist. So I can see that where where there would be a situation where where you would put the lines. But as as a community evolves and time goes by, there's more businesses that gets located each corner of our municipality. And I think it 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 should, it should be revisited definitely to to make it more more attracting to all of West Nipissing. Thank you. So we'll have to bring it back to council.
Are you, we haven't voted on the amendment. Are you proposing an amendment to the amendment of the bylaw?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, and if you're proposing an amendment to the amendment, then we have to vote on that amendment. That is being proposed. Conseil, sorry, I was going to say Conseil Plouet. Sorry, I retract my words to our Director Vic Dev.
So Madam Mayor, one thing I would like to be able to follow up on prior to council making this type of an amendment is to make sure that I'd have to go back and and read into the program itself. Quarry, I'm not sure would qualify. We generally have these types of programs for retail or commercial businesses for people, you know, in businesses that serve the public. I'm not saying that quarry is not open for for to to the public to serve, but I would have to maybe look at the wording to see if a quarry would in fact qualify under this program before council makes a decision on extending that boundary, unless council wants to extend it regardless. And if they fit the mandate, fine, but I'm not sure quarry fits the mandate of this program at this time. I'd have to double check that.
So recommendation is to wait for verification to see if quarries can be incorporated into the community proof of program. And I just want to see a show of hands.
I have a question. Well, not a question.
Okay.
Yeah, but that have to do with that.
Okay, Conseil Ali's to your question. Oh, excuse me, excuse.
You did mention, you did mention, Madam Mayor, that I was next, so thank you. I'd just like to voice my opinion on this bylaw that I don't think is very fair and it's it's not inclusive to all our our businesses. I don't know how we can provide some funds for some businesses because they're on the highway. And I had a lot of lodges and other businesses that are just a little off the highway and they they do not qualify. So I think like on Cairo Road, I think I have four businesses down the road and they don't qualify. But I thought the intent was to bring in tourists and all this and have a nice facade. But if you limit it to the highway, it's very exclusive. It's not inclusive to all our businesses. I don't think it's fair that West Nipissing should have a bylaw for certain businesses, that they can improve their their facade and other businesses can't. I think it should be on the first come, first first come, first get it qualification of some sort. This is very biased by law, I think, because all my businesses are off the road. I mean, Roseley Bay is off the road, Cairo, I have Taylor, I have all kinds of businesses and they're all off the road. So I have maybe two or three businesses on the highway, but it's very unfair. I think the next council maybe can review this and try to be more inclusive to all businesses because they all pay taxes to this municipality. So it's a really unfair by law if you think about it. So I just wanted to comment on that. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you Conseil Denis, and I think it's a valid point. But we did adopt this bylaw with specific boundaries that were described in the bylaw and with a limited budget because if there's a lot of businesses that want to take advantage to it, hopefully that there's going to be an increase in the budget for this program, which is beneficial to the municipality because when businesses invest in their facade, it means that there's a return for everyone for them. And also, you know, for the assessment value of businesses. Conseil Ali's.
Well, I'm on the same thing. I mean, I know that before and a long time ago with BIA and only the commercial in town were paying for it. Right now, my question is, the money that 15 or $45,000, $60,000 is coming from where? Just the business on the highway or coming from everybody from West Nipissing? Anybody that, is it the taxpayer altogether of West Nipissing that's paying for that budget? That's my question. Yes or no?
The response is yes.
Okay, well, then, I mean, I don't think it's fair either. I mean, when we're the last budget, we lost just a little bit of the $35,000 because some people were not using water and they wanted to take it out of the budget. So I would support that either. It's unfair for the other business that is paying it in the general operational budget. So that's where it's at.
Okay, I I hear what everyone is saying, you know, pertaining to opportunities of expansion. But we did adopt this bylaw. We discussed it at the ADA, we discussed the budget, we discussed the boundaries. The bylaw was approved. Now.
Yes, we cannot go around with that one.
So we have the bylaw in place and we have a proposed amendment to expand up to the boundary line for Markstay Warren along the highway corridor. And I think right now, you know, since we have the bylaw, a small budget for it and staff are doing what they can to promote it and hopefully it's going to be capitalized. If ever there's a business that doesn't qualify that approaches Town Hall, then there'll be, would it be conducive to say that that information would come to council if the budget is not being maximized for this program? Would that be fair to say, Stephan?
I'm not 100% sure. I'm following your.
Okay.
We, if it's, if we see the programs not being utilized, we'll have to basically go back to the drawing board and look to see why it's not being utilized. It was in the past. But definitely, if we get a number of requests from businesses that don't fit the current bylaw and the mandate and the criteria, it's certainly something we bring back to council for discussion. Absolutely. So I I'm not sure if that answers your question, but obviously, if we're not spending the money, we'll have to rethink if that program is needed. Because right now, we we have received a couple of applications, but we haven't approved any contributions yet as we're working things out with our 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 local businesses that did apply. But it's not like there was a lot of uptake and we're still promoting the 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 program. So definitely, we'll have to look at it. It was something that the Economic Development Committee and council agreed to to reintroduce to the community. And it was a one year trial basis. And obviously, before we get into the 2023 budget, we will certainly evaluate where we're at and the feedback we got. And if there's any changes to be done, we'll do it at that time for sure.
Further questions or comments? Conseil Chris, did you have your hand up?
No, I was just gonna actually concur with what you're saying. This is something that we passed because asking for for an amendment. So I I'm confused about why we're debating it so much. Thank you.
Okay, so right now, what we have beforehand is an amendment for a boundary change. Are there any objections with the recommended amendment for the boundary change?
No, not if it's part of the bylaw we have.
Okay, well, we're being specific with the boundary that's being proposed.
And that's part of it.
It's to be included.
But it's not part of it.
That's correct. That's why there's an amendment. So any objections?
Open objection?
I'm not voting for it if it's. If you're not voting, that would be a nay.
Well, that's it.
Okay. Any other objections? Carried at the. We move on to 9.3, the award tender for roof replacement for the storage building and arena lobby. A mover and a seconder. Conseil Val, Conseil Denis.
It is moved by Counsel Reberge and seconded by Counsel Denis Senegal. Be it resolved that the tender for the roof replacement of the storage building and arena lobby be awarded to 2622743 Ontario LTD in the amount of $67,345 plus HST, meeting all specifications.
Are there any questions or comments Conseil Ali's?
Okay, just a question because I mean, 2622743, is that the name of the company or?
Yes.
That's that they they don't, they don't have a name. They just have a number.
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? This would be for which arena lobby?
It's for the Sturgeon Falls Arena.
Okay, can we identify that on the resolution?
And there's.
And when it comes for the roof replacement for the storage building, this would be which building?
The one completely directly in front of the lobby at the Sturgeon Falls Arena.
Okay. Okay, so would everyone be in agreement with the proposed amendment that the resolution reflects that it would be for the Sturgeon Falls Roof Replacement Storage Building and Arena Lobby? So this way individuals can identify it's for the Sturgeon Falls Arena? And final question, there's quite a discrepancy between the two standards. The one that's being awarded to is in the range of nearly just like the over 67,000. The other tender received is nearly 200,000. Were the both companies bidding for the actual same job? And fulfilling the expectation?
Absolutely. When they bid on a doc, on on a job, it's it's, they get the same documentation, the same information, the same details. When we have a QRFP or a tender process, they bid on the exact same jobs.
Is that because, just out of curiosity, are both companies local or external? Like, I mean, local West Nipissing or from out of town?
I'm not 100% sure. I'd have to look into that and get back to you to see if they're local or not.
Okay. Okay, any other questions pertaining to the resolution Conseil Val?
To you, your worship. Is this within the budget? I was not part of the budget process, so I imagine we had a capital allowance for this project. And how does it fit in with that projection?
It's within the budgeted, the budgeted allotment for those two capital projects, yes.
Do you recall the the allotted budget for the capital project for you, Stephan?
I don't recall the exact numbers. I'd have to go back and check.
Okay, but it is within the budget that was approved by council.
Absolutely, it is, yes.
Any further questions? Open with Chris now. None? Any objections? Open objections now. Carried at the. Carried, add the D. We also have um a session to go and close, but before going to close, I just want to make sure that the public is aware that tomorrow there will be a ceremony to unveil the International Overdose Awareness Day plaque in West Nippising. The ceremony will commemorate and provide a space of healing and remembrance for community members affected by an overdose. This will be taking place tomorrow at ten forty-five AM at the fountain on King Street in Sturgeon Falls. Now we have to proceed into closed.
Can I make a comment, Madam Mayor? Sorry. Uh, just, uh, just a quick, uh, few words. I've been uh informed that councillor Leo Mallett uh will not be uh at the meeting November first. I just want to uh, on behalf of myself, the CAO who's been here a little bit longer uh than uh he, when he was elected, but councillor uh Mallett was elected in two thousand and three. And uh, I just want to uh thank him on behalf of myself and staff and probably the community and Ward Two uh for all of your service. Um, you know, I think there was a comment I saw a few months ago about it's, you know, it's fairly rare and very um heartwarming to know that when an individual leaves with that much tenure and past mayor of Cash Bay and he's the, as respected and uh liked as uh he uh, as when he uh joined, that's really something to say and really is a um uh, something for me uh, uh, to uh strive for, uh, or for all of us to strive for. And uh, I think that the two very good candidates for Ward Two um could learn and will have big shoes to fill. So I just wanna make that comment before you go into close second. Thank you, uh, Leo, and uh, you're the best, buddy.
Thank you. Conseil Leo?
Yes?
No, I thought you were saying something, so.
Yeah, I say thank you so much to all of you. Thank you, all staff and all council. Thank you.
Okay, um, you know, I wasn't aware that you weren't gonna be here November first, but um on behalf of all the constituents and constituents of your ward and staff, thank you for the many years of service. Um, I've always said that you were our social butterfly on council and uh interacting with the constituents from different walks of life. So thank you.
Thank you so much for the time, words.
Conseil Broly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, the, the same Leo. I really, it was an honor and a privilege to work with you. And I really appreciate all the uh, the knowledge that you, uh, you've uh, uh, given us. So thank you very much. And also, if I may add, Madam Mayor, um, uh, I think it would be wise to advise the, the resident that the fire halls are gonna be open for receiving ballots uh Wednesday and Thursday from three to seven and uh, uh, Saturday from uh ten to two. So, um, uh, the resident, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure the resident would appreciate this. Thank you.
Okay, well, um, thank you for highlighting that. I know that our election clerk and the election team have been doing a phenomenal job in disseminating the information to the constituents and have demonstrated a lot of flexibility with expanded hours in the evenings and on weekends and opportunities for residents to even deliver their ballots at different location to ensure that ballots are received on time for election day. So kudos to the election team for the phenomenal work that they are doing because I think what's critical is that uh the democratic process is as flexible as possible, allow people to vote. And it will encourage all residents of West Nippising to exercise their right to vote. So with that, we move on to closed and we will need a mover and a seconder to be able to proceed with the closed session. Conseil Nan Fan, Conseil Leo?
It is moved by councillor Mallett, uh councillor Reberge and seconded by councillor Mallett. Be it resolved that we proceed into section, be it resolved that pursuant to section two thirty-nine two of the municipal act and we proceed into closed meeting to discuss the following litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals uh regarding uh an update regarding MX Constructors.
Any objections? Open objection? None? Carried, add the D?
I'm just going to close.